Again, we're in a council meeting, so when you do wish to speak, please stand. Just take your position and that way we can recognize whoever is standing. Just a couple of items. March is Kidney Month. I just want to give you a brief description of Kidney Month. It's Thursday, March 11th, 2021 World Kidney Day. Each day, one in 10 Canadians learning that their kidneys have failed, and this number is on the rise. Forty-five percent of new kidney patients are under 65. Their survival will depend on dialysis treatments or a kidney transplant. In 2019, kidney disease was the 10th leading cause of death in Canada. And there are currently 96 people in Prince Edward Island receiving hemodialysis treatments three or more times a week. Last year, the Kidney Foundation of Canada, Atlantic branch, provided over $18,000 in financial assistance to islanders and their families with kidney disease. March is Kidney Month, and March 11th is World Kidney Day. And on this day, our iconic bell turtleneck will be lit up in the color of magenta, which I believe is a little more burgundy red or a pinkish color. And as mayor and at council, we ask that the month of March be observed as Kidney Month in the city of Charlestown. And the second item, as you probably know, this is World Women's Day. Correct? And I just have a quick... So International Women's Day is a global holiday celebrated annually on March 8th, today, to commemorate the cultural, political, and socio-economic achievements of women. It is also a focal point in the women's rights movement, bringing attention to issues such as gender equality, reproductive rights, and violence against women. So I wanted to acknowledge those two events today. And declarations of conflict of interest. I think there is one for sure. Deputy?
Thank you. Worship to the planning report, number one. That's my employer, so I'm assuming I'll be in conflict on that resolution.
So it's clearly being stated, there's conflict. All right? Okay. Approval of the agenda?
Worship, there are a couple of things to go over.
Okay.
As item 6.12 is not in compliance with section 42 of the procedure by law, it will have to come up, and it is also after request of Council Twill. With regards to item 6.3, the telecommunications policy and the memorandum of... sorry, and MLS for the QP 501 civic contractorship is added to section 6.3.
What was the first one that says 6.2?
6.12.
Oh, 6.12.
Yes.
And what was that one?
And sorry, and then 6.13, is that the one you're referring to?
No, the very first one.
6.12 is the one that was going to be brought forth in regards to the CAC, but it's not in compliance with section 42 of the procedure by law. As such, it's...
So the one that would be...
Correct. Under new business.
Okay, so that won't be coming forward again?
It's gone, no.
Okay.
Counsel Twill, anything else?
Yeah. Worship, I'm not feeling well. I just wondered if we could move...
Finance?
The capital projects to the first item, so I can vote on that and then sign off.
Okay. Finance audit intended. Any problems with that? So 6.2 becomes 6.1, 6.1 becomes 6.2. Easy math. Good. Okay. So approval of the agenda moved by Counsel Bernard, seconded by Counsel Ramsey. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. Now we have two previous draft minutes. So we have two regular monthly meetings, February 8th, special meetings open February 22nd, and March 4th, 2021. Moved by Counsel Bernard, seconded by Counsel Ramsey. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, good. Business arises out of the minutes. Seeing none, can we go to the first report? Deputy?
Thank you, Worship. Our committee met five times since our last council meeting, and those reports and minutes are in your package. If there's any questions, I'll do my best to answer them. I think we have a couple of resolutions for council to consider tonight. I'll say, Worship.
Any questions? Move to the floor. None? Do I go with the first one, Mr. Kelly?
Worship, moved by Deputy Mayor Cody, seconded by Counsel Rivera, just that the city of Charlestown entered into the attached sponsorship agreement with the 2023 Canada Winter Games Post Society, Inc., and that the mayor and CEO are hereby authorized to execute such standard contract and agreements required to confront this resolution.
Okay. So that was moved by Counsel Deputy Mayor Cody, Counsel Bernard. Any questions? Counsel Bernard?
Counsel Cody, this here resolution, this is just for the sponsorship, correct? There's still... still nothing to come. This is just an open by the sponsor from the city of Charlestown. There's still... this is the other side of the capital project agreements.
This is actually operational.
Right. So there's another one coming. There's more money than the 1.8 for capital... for capital gains.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. This is the first part?
Yes. I put a minus, okay.
Later? Question call?
Yes, question call.
Okay. All of those in favor, please raise your hand. Counsel Twill, yea or nay?
Yea, sir.
Counsel Todd?
Nine to.
Okay. So 10-0. Get someone there, sir?
Worship, moved by Deputy Mayor Cody, seconded by Counsel Rivera, that council adopt the 2021-2022 city capital budget in the amount of $68,564,137 minus partner funding of $22,865,920. The city's budget allocation before partner funding of $19,270,400 for Parks and Recreation, $33,388,200 for Public Works, $140,500 for Police, $3.4 million for fire and emergency preparedness, $5,510,000 for Transit, $2,764,950 for Community Sustainability, $94,000 for Information Technology, $2,212 for Kerry, $892,000 and $815 for E-Sync Center. And the council adopted 2020 capital budget for the Charlestown Water and Sewer in the amount of $11,550,000 minus partner funding of $7,350,090. And further, that the staff be authorized to tender projects and return to council for approval of issuance of long-term debt associated with the capital expenditure program at the appropriate time when funds are required.
Deputy, seconded by Counsel Rivera. Any questions?
It's in your pack? No, no, sorry.
It was in the special meeting package, I know.
Okay, yes. You have the special meeting package there, Counsel?
Yes, I got it in my drawer here, sorry.
Counsel Bernard?
The CEO wrote out, I heard, about $68 million.
Yes.
Twenty-two of it in partner funding?
Yes. Yeah, I have it right here. Twenty-two point eight, $22,865,000. Here, here.
I thought you were excluding one.
So it's $68,564,137 minus partner funding of $22,859,920.
You got $46.
Is the $7.8 million there for the Honeywell?
Let me just see if finance is here.
That would be it.
Let me just check and see first.
Little pause.
I got 34 million in. I thought you were talking 31.
Mark, are you on the line?
Oh, me? No. Mr. Lannigan? Oh, next door. Yeah, he's coming in. Just while he's coming in, last week, Stats Canada reported that Canada's economy shrank by 5.4%. And that was the steepest contraction since records began in 1961. On average, we're usually a 2% increase, 5.4%. So any injection to the economy is going to help, thanks to the city of Charlestown.
So Mark, staff are looking for some... sorry, council are looking for some clarifications. Counsel Mark has a couple of questions for you, please.
So, Mark, I understand that the CEO, the budget is $68 million, 22 of his partner funding is $46. We had 12 carryovers, which is 34. And I thought in our discussions, we were more of a 31. That includes the 5%. So there's a difference here of $3 million. Sixty-eight, minus 45, what is it? Forty-five, minus 12, 32. Yeah, so 45, and then we have 12 left over from funds from last year's boring. And that 45 bring down to 32. Did you say left over? Is that your... is that your carryover? They're about the same. The money in the bank approximates the carryover.
Brings it down to what?
I have that. So that brings it down to about 32 net new boring requirement. Okay, so what I heard, if I got this right, $68 million? Yes. 22 with partner funding? 22. So that gives you 46. Yep. And you take 12 off that, you get 34. 34, well, so it's 45.5, take 12 and a half off that. Take 12 and a half off. Okay. So we're 33.5. We're 32. And I thought we passed it, 31, 200. Well, we did a few changes there. We're in that 31, 32 zone. Okay, so we're 33.5. So we're still at least a million. Yeah, that's where it came in at. So this is just a change in the budget. Coming up at 33.5. Around 33, actually. Because when we finished up the other night, was it not 31, 31.2?
No, I think we started at 31.
We started.
Counsel Bernard, I think that we added a few things.
But we had the outdoor multi-use.
At 200,000. Yeah, there was...
No, I think there was something else added.
There was an error on the partner funding side.
Remember, there's some calculation differences, and we had to correct those transit differences as well.
Correct.
That was brought up that night.
Oh, we took out 200,000 to correct that.
So is this the one?
Yeah.
That becomes the...
I'm not sure. We're at 33.
This is where all the changes.
Yeah, we discussed all the changes. Anyway, I kind of, I mean, to me, if it's a couple hundred thousand, but over a million dollars, I'd kind of like to know where it is. And I don't have the... You guys said you put the new budget under desk?
Yeah, that's... that we put on today, right? The revised budget?
The special meeting.
Last week.
And today.
And today.
But the resolution that was in that package was revised this afternoon.
Okay. And that's what he has right there.
Exactly.
Yeah. We're all right?
We can all...
Too likely a copy.
That's the budget we had last night.
It's always, we never spend the whole...
I think Counsel Bernard, what you're looking for is an updated document like this.
Correct.
The show we'll be talking about.
That's what's right there.
The show where that's why it's 33.5.
Well, I guess when we last had to be closed session, we talked about it.
When, Thursday or today?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday. We were at 31, 200,000.
Mark?
And I'm trying to figure out where... if we're at 33.5. Can't, there's too many numbers rolling around.
Right.
To know where we were to where we are. I know where we are now.
Right. And we're at, where are we at now?
We're at 33.
Yeah, okay. It's amended. And it's noted, correct?
Okay, so it's just a modification of figures we had last night. So I had it on... Yeah, it's a combination. I'm not sure what's the latest one you have, Counsel Bernard.
Yes.
What we had last night.
I know, Thursday night.
Thursday, sorry. I have to kind of look at the one you have and compare it to the one that we had today to identify the differences. Yeah. There were no changes today. Information Technology, nothing changed.
Nothing.
Civic Center, so nothing changed. So it should have been the same as Thursday night.
Right.
The only thing... Thursday night, we revealed $31 million.
Yeah.
And we put the couple hundred thousand, that I recall. That's 31.2. So we're talking $2 million. I looked it up. Are we suspended until we find out?
Or we pass it when we find out?
What's that?
Or we pass it and find out? You pass it, but we have to get our capital budget in place now. And in years past, we've never spent the 26 million or the 30 million. It's always been half. Correct, Mark?
Correct.
We vote in the past, like, for example, last year, we probably spent 50% of the capital budget, and then there were carryovers.
Yes. So nothing else that you know was added, designed for the top?
No.
There was nothing added?
No.
Just mis... Yeah, I don't know if there was a misinterpretation by you or just you looking at the old numbers, but there was no new initiative passed from what we had discussed as the last Thursday.
Thursday and today.
Counsel Bernard, that's today. There was nothing today. And Thursday, if you want, take a look at them. I think they're both, and the numbers are the exact same numbers.
So the sheets I have would be the exact same number?
Yeah. So I'm just comparing the two, so that from Thursday to today, there's no changes.
There are no checks.
So we should be at 31,900,000, not 33.5.
Well, those are the numbers from Thursday night. So there's nothing else there, so I don't know.
But I think what we're going to find out, Mark, is that it's probably 33 million, what we're voting on tonight. There was a miscalculation from Thursday.
You are. Then what we have here, it's the same figure that we had first, you're right. 49.7.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's actually 49.895. That was the additional. So you can round that off with 5,000. And you can take the 12 million off the carryover, so you're at 38.
Carrier is 12.5, Counsel.
What's that?
The carrier is 12.5.
So you're at 37.5. And then we have the Honeywell, which is 7 million.
Yeah.
7.5, so that took us down to 31.
Yeah.
And that's the one off these figures.
Yeah.
And so as staff have indicated, we haven't added any other projects on other than what has been discussed by council.
So then there's some figures in here that I write there.
They could have, when they went in for the final go-through today to balance things out, that's the final, these are the final numbers.
Right. So I guess, Peter, what I'm saying is, it says here 49.7, and this is our capital budget.
Correct.
So you do simple math, you subtract the carryover, and you subtract the Honeywell, and you're at 31. So I'm trying to figure out, where are we at 33? Where's the other 2.5 million dollars? Where is it? It's not showing up. The figure still says 49.79. Everyone's listed in at that topic. So how are we getting it?
If you pass 31 tonight, and when Mark finds...
Correct.
The other 2.5 or whatever it is, we'll just supplementary estimate it and add on.
Good.
Their tests should be just there.
So how can you pass 31? Which projects are you passing, and which ones are you not?
Well, maybe we're right on after 20 seconds.
So, Mark, are you able to, if we gave it some time to go and check, can you come back and...
No, I have to sit down with Counsel Bernard to just...
Let's, let's, let's just...
We'll do what Counsel has done since. We'll pass it, and we'll go through, and find it with the other area.
What the staff have indicated, that it's hard to pinpoint which ones you're approving, which ones you're not.
We'll pass it as is, Mr. Kelly.
It's the projects that you... that we want you to approve. If you only partial, pass partial, then they're not sure which projects you're approving, which ones you're not.
Well, let me ask you this. If this is 47.9 million, how do you get to 68?
Yeah.
Sorry, Counsel Bernard? Well, the paper says 49.790. 49.895 is what's here tonight. Okay, so that's different than this one. Yeah, it's eight. Regardless. If you just start it off with 68 million. So it's 68.5.
Right.
Gross, partner funding of 22.8.
Yeah.
For 45.7. And then take your 12 off that, you're at 33. Right. But that 33 includes, it's a Honeywell arrangement as well. Some of those other figures last night, or Thursday night, they include it. We had a discussion on that. Possibly. I think I hit Honeywell in there at 6.8 first.
Correct.
And then I added the tax. 7.5. What's 7.5? 7.5. Still in there. Is it 7.5 in there?
Yes.
And 6.8?
No, 7... In the resolution, it's minus...
No, but in the old numbers.
Oh, the old numbers? It was 7 million.
10.45.
Yeah. Okay, let's just pass it as is, and then we'll work out the details. Well, again, the capital budget is a go-forward process. Okay? So it's, the numbers will be corrected by our finance department, correct, Mark?
Well, I think the numbers are correct there.
Okay, so there it is.
And all, and all products, when they go to tender, will be brought here for council's approval, Worship.
Correct. So anything we're spending in this budget has to come back here to get voted on anyways.
So then why don't we just pass it? No, 100 million, no, I wouldn't.
No, 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 because we didn't go over?
Unless we know what we're passing.
Yeah.
So when I left here Thursday night, it's 31.2.
Okay.
Today is 33.5, and I have no idea what 2.5 is.
So if we meet tomorrow and we see it's $33 million, are you going to pass it?
Yep.
Okay, well, let's pass it now?
If I can find you.
Well, why don't we defer until tomorrow, until we have...
You want to meet again? Yeah?
Well, I mean, from...
You need 24 hours, so we have to leave until Wednesday.
The public, the public has a right to know.
Sure.
What budget we're passing, and if we're still not sure, I mean, what's one more day?
Two days, because we have 24 hours.
To do it right?
Well, if it takes that, let's do that. You want to do that? Lunchtime on Wednesday? Lunchtime on Wednesday? Mark, can you get the numbers ready by then? For Thursday?
I think I have the numbers right. I can sit down with councils and go through them. So all I'm looking for, Mark, is just where we are from 31.2 to 33.5. That's all I need to know.
Were the changes?
Yeah, I'd have to sit down and see where you had the 31.5. But I can tell you right now.
Sure.
If we could do that and look line by line, we could identify it.
Okay.
If you have your list from Thursday?
Yeah.
So what do you have at Parks and Rec? Well, that doesn't matter. We have a final total here of what we're saying before. But if we were going to zoom in on changes, I'd need to go through each of the departments.
Good point.
Okay, so you want to go through and see where there may be... That would be where the easiest way to identify the difference.
What do you have for Parks? Is that the first item?
Why don't we do all that tonight? Maybe we'll try that. So we can do that Wednesday if you want.
Wednesday noon is available, if council is available.
What's that?
Wednesday at noon is available, if council is available, we'd have to give 24 hours.
Are you available Wednesday? Majority? You're all right? Great, you're all right, Counsel Bernard?
You say Wednesday noon?
Yeah, that would be the nearest time for 24 hours.
Counsel Bernard?
I'll... I'll see what you have in the meeting.
Or phone in?
Yeah.
What's to get the figures?
You're all right?
Then we'll know. We can phone in.
Counsel Twill?
So what are we doing here?
We're going to come back on Wednesday and go over the numbers with our finance manager, and then, and then pass the budget. Right, Mark? Good?
I just wanted 2.5 million.
We do have a finance audit intended, or a finance meeting tomorrow, I believe.
No, no, it's canceled.
Cancelled?
Okay. So deferred?
That would be mine, except for, of course, council. I mean, I'm only one person.
Put a resolution on the floor?
I'll put a resolution on it. Do you defer until we...
Till Wednesday noon.
Okay. Seconded by Counsel Bernard.
Don't you have standing issue?
The numbers don't add up from what we were...
Two and a half million dollars.
Pardon me?
Two and a half million dollars.
Two and a half million dollars. So Mark can't answer that?
Well, I'll tell you, we threw the figures. See where discrepancy is.
He'll probably show us the figures on Wednesday, right, Mark?
Uh, if that's the wish. I'd have to have what we had, have to sit down with Counsel Rivera, get through the 31.5.
Yeah. So we may, we'll find if that's not 31.5, it's 33 million. In that.
Based on the schedule I have in front of me, yes.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor of deferred, please raise your hand. Counsel Twill, yea or nay?
No.
Okay, nine to one. So I'll put that as deferred. Anything else? Come on.
That's it, Worship.
Okay. Counsel Twill?
Thank you for all your...
Yeah, thanks, Mark.
Okay.
Okay.
Peter?
Thank you.
Peter?
Yes, Counselor?
I'm signing off now.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. On to the next item. You're, you're all right, that's it?
Hello?
Hello?
You'd like to hang up on Peter?
So now we're going to planning. Counsel, move.
Thank you, Worship. Tonight in planning, we have a total of four items or issues to address. Two of them are from the Planning and Heritage Committee, and two of them are from the Planning, Planning Core. First, we move the Planning and Heritage Committee issues. The first one is the Automated Building Permit Approval. There's a, a resolution in your package to approve this particular, uh, piece of equipment. It's going to help the Planning Department quite a bit in the processing of building permits. I'll give Mr. Forbes the opportunity to speak to it if he wishes, but I think it's been around for so long that, not eons, but for a long time, everybody's pretty well aware of what it does and why we need it and what we hope to do for us. Do you wanna, you wanna address it all?
I would say, Counsel, that there's a number of different automated building permit systems out there. They range from a hundred thousand to millions. Uh, the, one nice thing about this particular vendor, it is used in the city of DIA, and it's used in the county of Cumberland. It services just outside of Amherst, like a number of communities. So they, there is some customers nearby. I think Counsel Rivera, on her trip, saw this product, and we did a little bit of a tour to see some of these products in the past, so, you know, we spent quite a bit of time reviewing the application. We think it's a robust tool. It will allow us to, to allow people to make an application online in the future, so we're looking forward to moving on. Taking some time.
I understand, Your Worship, that the ranking points, it came first, at the Davenport, the Davenport Group that provides it, came first with an eighty-five point five rating, and the price tag is ninety-eight thousand four hundred fifty-four dollars, plus all applicable taxes. That's pretty well it, I think, name is...
Yeah, yeah.
Do you wanna read the resolution, Mr. Kelly? Or is there a resolution there?
Uh, several.
Not for the purchase of the...
Yes, there is one.
Yeah.
But you've seen the mayor ask, is there any question?
Do you wanna read the other ones, or do you wanna just cover them all?
Oh, uh, whatever you wish. You want me to do the model?
Yeah.
Okay, the second resolution in the package, or the issues to be addressed, is we have a bit of a shortage of staff in the Planning Department with a movement of one of our urban planners. Uh, we have a new planner in, and we have one being interviewed, competing at the present time. So with that in mind, and the, the amount of business that's coming into the Planning Department, we would like to employ Ira Burt, a former employee, to help us get over the mountain of work that we have to deal with. I think Ira's gonna do building inspections and a bit of planning work.
A little bit more planning work, but that's where we're a little bit, of course, that's...
Okay. Uh, the other two are planning only, uh, I think, Counsel, Deputy Mayor Cody, Deputy... Contact on Angus Drive. The first, the first one on the planning area, being Angus Drive, uh, it's a request to proceed to the public meeting. By the way, both of our issues are requests to proceed to the public meeting. This one is to proceed to the public meeting to rezone Angus Drive from a single-detached residential R1 zone to mixed-use corridor MUC, MUC zone, and 413 St. Peters Road from a low-density residential zone to a mixed corridor zone, and to amend Appendix A, future land use map of the official map, official plan map for Angus Drive and 413 St. Peters Road, from mature neighborhood to village center commercial, and further to consolidate Lot Forty at Angus Drive, 44, 413 of St. Peters Road, and 419 of St. Peters Road, uh, being Mel's Convenience Store into one parcel in order to facilitate road upgrades by the province to St. Peters Road, and construct a second means of access to the Convenience Store to and from Angus Drive. Basically, it's a median in front of Mel's down to Angus Drive where there'd be a roundabout. And once again, it's just a permission to proceed to the public because of the rezoning issue. Uh, the last one is 79 Parnell Street, and it's a request to proceed to public consultation to amend it, Appendix Approved Site-Specific Exemption Exemptions, to exempt 79 Parnell Street from Sections thirty-four point two of the zoning and development bylaw, from the required permitted land uses at the grade, at grade unwalkable streets, and create Appendix B, approved site-specific exemption for the official plan to exempt 7.9 Parnell Street from the designated permitted uses, uh, which are business, retail establishments types of things, bars and that sort of thing, uses on a walkable street as per Section four point two three of the official plan, in order to allow residential dwelling units on the ground floor abutting a walkable street. So that also is seeking permission to go to the public meeting.
That's to public consultations, correct.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
So we have some questions here, Counsel Bernard, do you have a question?
I just have one for the manager, or, or for...
Good.
Yeah, sorry. Building permit values for this year, up above last year. I guess something the last couple of days about...
Yeah, last, last year, we were, I think...
Record break.
Yeah, like a hundred and eighty million.
Eighty million, yeah, exactly.
So, I mean, that's, that's a very high, we've never been to that number before.
So what's it look like for this year?
I would say, based upon what, you know, it, it looks like, about, you know, again, certainly in the year, but, uh, it's still busy in there, there's a lot of big projects that are in the hopper, so I would say that it would be similar. I mean, I hate predicting into the future, which I can't control, but, uh, there's no indication that it's, uh, things are slowing down at this point.
Upper year, so the revenue should be every bit as much as we were asking?
Uh, you know, presumably. There's still a lot of housing that needs to be built, there's some large projects underway that, that are in various phases of construction, a couple of big, large apartment buildings being proposed in the downtown, so all of these things, if they come to permit this year, they'll have a, again, contribute to keeping those numbers up high as they were last year.
Okay. Any other questions? Duffy, there, Counselor? Okay, Duffy. Good report.
Another record.
Which one do you wanna read first, sir?
Worship, moved by Counsel Duffy, second by Counsel McCabe, that as per the conditions of the public request for proposals for electronic building permitting system, the best ranked submission by Davenport Group in the amount of ninety-eight thousand four hundred fifty-four dollars, plus all applicable taxes, be approved, Worship.
Questions called? Questions called? Oh, oh, sorry, sorry.
Sorry.
You were right ahead there.
Worship, thanks, Alex.
Counsel, Ron?
I will be, I will be approving this, of course.
Oh.
Davenport, the company that we're going with, Software, what, Miss Howdy, use that as a tool, or just...
It was, just outside of Amherst, when we, uh, just outside of Amherst, they, they run the whole county of everything other than Amherst, from that particular shop, so it was a number of different municipalities. The nice thing about that product, since they're using it, it's very scalable for small communities and large communities. So this particular product, DIA is a larger, a larger center than we are, but, but again, they have New Orleans, and they have some major cities. So the nice thing is it's scalable, we don't need it to that level, but, but in future, there's lots of capability to improve that system, and possibly other departments can, uh, take advantage of the permitting system that they can maybe come from parks and trees, but, but it's a very good system for us.
Okay, you go. Question?
Call.
Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. So it's eight to zero.
Worship, moved by Counsel Duffy, second by Counsel McCabe, that pursuant to the requirements of Section twenty of the Planning Act, IRSPEI nineteen eighty-eight, Cap P dash eight, and the requirements of Section two point one of the zoning and development bylaw, PH dash D dot two, Counsel hereby appoints Ira Burt as a designated development officer to administer provisions of the zoning and development bylaw, with the exception of subdivision developments, rezoning, and variance applications. This delegation of authorities shall cease if the job duties of the employee no longer require this designation, if the employee reiterates his employment, or if the city of Shelltown are applying further regulations.
So we have to call back in the, uh...
Yeah.
Deputy?
Well, you have to vote in the...
Yeah, I know, but he can vote in this.
He also should...
Well, I know, but we, we, I thought, left the room. So the resolution, Deputy, is about Ira Burt, Ira and Ira Burt. Questions to call? Right, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Zero. The next one, sir, don't you read the...
Moved by Counsel Duffy, second by Counsel McCabe, to request to amend Appendix G, the zoning map of the zoning development bylaw for Angus Drive.
No, no, go to the next one, go to the next one, while he's here, let's bring that one.
Moved by Counsel Duffy, second by Counsel McCabe, that to request to amend Appendix C, approved site-specific exemptions as per Section three point one one, site-specific exemptions of the zoning development bylaw to exempt seven to nine Parnell Street, PID one one zero five four five one, from Section thirty-four point two of the planning, sorry, of the zoning development bylaw, from the required permitted land uses at grade unwalkable streets, and to create a new table, Appendix B, approved site-specific exemptions for the official plan to exempt seven to nine Parnell Street, PID one one zero five four five one, from the designated permitted uses on a walkable street as per Section four point two point three, sub two of the official plan, in order to allow residential dwelling units on the ground floor abutting a walkable street, be approved, proceed to public consultation.
Questions called? Questions called? All those favored, please raise your hand. Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
Moved by Counsel Duffy, second by Counsel McCabe, that to request to amend Appendix G, zoning map of the zoning and development bylaw for Angus Drive, Lot Forty, PID forty-one ninety-one forty-three, from a single-detached residential large R1L zone to mixed-use corridor MUC zone, and four one three St. Peters Road, PID four one nine one three five, from the low-density residential R2 zone to mixed-use corridor MUC zone, and to amend Appendix A, future land use map of the official plan for Angus Drive, Lot Forty, PID forty-one ninety-one forty-three, and four one, four thirteen St. Peters Road, PID forty-one ninety-one thirty-five, from mature neighborhood to village center commercial, and further to consolidate Angus Drive, Lot Forty, PID forty-one ninety-one forty-three, for, um, four thirteen St. Peters Road, PID forty-one ninety-one thirty-five, and four nineteen St. Peters Road, PID nineteen twenty-one eighty-seven, in order to facilitate a great, in order to facilitate road upgrades by the province to St. Peters Road, and construct a second means of access for the Convenience Store to and from Angus Drive, be approved, proceed to public consultation.
Should be easy. Is there a question?
Question, too. Um, it could be for Counsel Duffy, or, sorry.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sorry, sorry, thank you.
Thank you, Worship. Um, just a question on, has the government approached the residents at all yet before our public consultation? As far as the neighborhood on Angus Drive, has been any communication, do you know, between the province and the neighbors?
Uh, Mr. Yeo, the provincial engineer, was at the planning board meeting, he didn't mention anything surveying the local, the local people out there, up until this point, anyway. They could have, but he didn't mention it. He didn't?
I, I can...
Just can't have?
Yes.
What's that?
He did?
They hadn't made contact with people with problems that they need.
Okay. Just recently?
Uh, last few months, yeah.
I worship, it is tendered. Uh, he, he did mention that on the call that we had at the planning board meeting, that, uh, that, that it is tendered, and it's, I think they anticipated having it done by midsummer.
Yeah?
Is there...
Because I asked the question.
Yeah, exactly correct, yeah. That's what I...
Counsel Ramsey?
He didn't say anything about surveying the neighborhood.
No, just when the tender will...
Yeah.
Thank you, Worship. Counsel Duffy, just to renew my, my memory, is this the same area there we were discussing in twenty-seventeen, was it, or twenty-eighteen?
Like, in regard to...
Where they wanna put the road behind Mel's and back, that way the ease of traffic and all that stuff?
Yes.
It's the same idea?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry.
Before the call... A different, a different approach, different approach to the whole thing. Different land purchased and that sort of thing, but it's the same basic problem being addressed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Different approach, because it's gonna have a roundabout?
Yes.
I just wanted to stretch my line, because we were for, there, there was those residents at that time, too. Okay, thank you. So we're gonna have a public consultation, consultation.
Yeah, thank you, Worship. It does say here, May fourth, two thousand fifteen, Counsel Ramsey, the application was rejected, the driving of the pass was rejected until it could be determined when the control intersection at the corner of Angus and St. Peters Road may be constructed.
Correct.
Now the roundabout is being proposed, so I'll go back.
Okay.
Good point.
Okay, thank you for...
Counsel, Eric?
Yes.
Do you have to report?
Yes. I'm just trying to get my, sorry, I'm trying to say an area. Thank you.
Question?
Uh, question called?
All those in favor, please raise your hand. Eight to zero.
See, Worship, thank you.
Yeah, very much, thank you. Just before you go with Counsel Duffy.
Yes.
If you do look in your report, they're asking your last resolution?
Mm-hmm.
So, end of February twenty-twenty, total for permit value was five point four million. End of February twenty-twenty-one, eighteen million.
Thirteen increase. So you're right, Mr. Forbes. So almost another percent increase.
In a year. We, we could do those permits. Yeah. Thank you.
With the automated system, you'll be able to push them through quicker.
Maybe we need two automated systems.
Can you just call only one?
He'll call.
No, I wouldn't. It's not with you.
Okay, next report is... Protective Services.
No, HR.
Did you get me? It is HR.
So, thank you, Worship. The Human Resources Communication and Administration Committee met last week, March the fifth. The minutes are included in your package. We have no resolutions for your consideration, and... Um, I, I thought those came from finance, and then they're not mine anymore, are they? Oh, okay. I lied. We have two resolutions for your consideration. And if I, if you have any other questions, I'll be my best to answer. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bernard.
Any questions? Any questions for the, the... Read the resolution, sir?
Yes, Worship.
Welcome.
Worship, moved by Counsel Yankoff, second by Counsel Deputy Cody, that the City of Shelltown ratify and adopt the attached negotiated memorandum of settlement to amend the collective agreement with QP local five oh one civic for the period January first, two thousand nineteen, to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, Worship.
Questions called? Questions called? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Eight to zero. Counsel Bernard stepped in.
Worship, moved by Counsel Yankoff, second by Deputy Mayor Cody, that the City of Shelltown approve and adopt the attached draft telecommuting policy effective March eighth, two thousand twenty-one, Worship.
Question called?
Who's that again, sir? Sorry, Worship, I didn't get the last part of that.
It's that the City of Shelltown approve and adopt the attached draft telecommuting, telecommuting policy.
Commuting policy. Yes.
Effective March eighth, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, questions called?
Questions called? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Counsel Rivera, everyone? Or did you wanna vote on it, Counsel Rivera? Sorry, Counsel Bernard, you wanna vote on the telecommuting, telecommuting policy?
Oh, I'm telling you, yeah, that's no problem.
You're in favor?
I am.
That's good. Anything else there, Counsel Yankoff?
That's everything, thank you, Worship.
So the next report is Protective Services.
All right, Worship, thank you. Members of Counsel, Protective Emergency Services Committee met on February twenty-third. Uh, the minutes are included in your package. Uh, there is a second reading to amend the COVID-nineteen temporary patio program bylaw. Uh, and other than that, there's no resolutions. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
No questions.
Take that.
Rachel?
Do you wanna read the resolution, sir? Actually, it's a...
Second read.
Second read.
Yes, Worship.
Okay.
Worship, the purpose of this amending bylaw is to change the effective date of temporary outdoor padios within the City of Shelltown from October thirty-first, two thousand twenty, to October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Therefore, be resolved that the City of Shelltown COVID-nineteen temporary patio program bylaw be read a second time, and that the said bylaw be now approved and adopted, moved by Counsel Rivera, and second by Counsel Ramsey, Worship.
Okay, Shell pass? That's it? Here, eight to zero. Okay, sir?
Thanks.
All right, sir. Thank you. That's it? Thank you, Counsel, Your worship. And we'll go to Parks and Recreation, Counsel, Jerry Bernard.
Thank you, Worship. Uh, Parks and Rec and Leisure Activities Committee, Worship, met on February sixteenth, and again on March the first. Copy of the approved, wrapped in a weekly package. There's no resolution tonight for consideration. Do have, Worship, the volunteer of the month is John O'Brien. So, Worship, on police, when else, the winner is John O'Brien. Been involved with Sherwood Park and Royal Mountain Hockey Association, Worship, for twenty years as treasurer. John has just took over the role of ice coordinator for the last three years, so John's actually been volunteering at Sherwood Park and Royal Hockey for twenty-three years. I happen to know John, uh, and I know John is a fantastic volunteer, and a super guy, and I'm not surprised, I, I am a little surprised to do it twenty-three years, as I said, and that's quite a commitment. So, uh, again, congratulations to John. I know John, in the summertime, at least, he can take the golf, and it's a lot, it seems like he spends a lot of time with my hockey, whether it's the treasurer, or whether it's the ice coordinator.
Good.
So, good on him.
Congratulations, Mr. Johnson.
It's, uh, it's volunteers like John, that, you know, keep these sports associations, be very able to keep the rates down, and keep the function, so, good on John. Worship, I want to take a minute to congratulate our own Josh Curry. Josh, the community promoter from the American Hockey League to the National Hockey Pickford Penguins Taxi Squad. The Taxi Squad, Taxi Squad, as some people may not know, is a group of four to six players that are picked from the league below them, the American Hockey League in this case. And they travel and practice with the team, and they're available to play NHL games when it's been called upon. And Josh has been called upon, and he's been up playing with the Pittsburgh Penguins. Anyone that knows Josh knows he's a fantastic personality, very well liked by all those that have met him. A trait he no doubt gets from his parents. Uh, Steve Curry was a career police officer with the City of Shelltown. Joanne, uh, his wife, worked with my wife at the Englishman Hospital, great people. And Josh is one of them ones, you know, he goes through hockey, and he continues to surprise. Like, I remember, you know, people were, you know, would Josh make junior hockey, would it make the P E I rocket? Well, Josh made it. Didn't, they didn't think he'd make it America Hockey League team. Well, he made that toe, and he excelled there, and right now he's captain of the team. But Josh has proven to be an underdog, and has excelled at every level he gets the opportunity. The NHL is the highest level of competition, and Josh is knocking on that door right now. So, good luck to Josh, and look forward to watching him on a regular basis, playing the National Hockey. Congratulations to Josh. Worship, uh, in our package, as some of you may see, the Government of Canada has committed thirty-one million towards health, healthy communities initiatives. $31 million towards health, healthy communities initiative. So, your worship, in addition to physical infrastructure for that money, the fund places priority on social and digital infrastructure as well. So the fund will provide up to $250,000 per project. And so that, it can cover up to 100% of the project. So, the city of Charlestown, the Environment Sustainability Department is collaborating with the Parks and Recreation Department to create a project proposal that will act to revitalize outdoor community spaces within the city. So just to give everyone an idea, the project will include the addition of bike racks and rest stops that will improve residents' ability to use active transportation to move about the city and between different community spaces. Purchasing outdoor rink kits, and we talked about this within our own Parks and Recreation Committee. So this project will allow us to buy outdoor rink kits that will be paid for, can be paid for through this program. That will increase the usable days of existing community rinks each winter. In addition, they will reduce the required frequency of flooding, thereby also reducing maintenance time and water consumption. So, these kits obviously become some ladders and some boards around them. So, third pillar on this is the launch of the 100 benches initiative. Excuse me. That will add 100 new benches to green spaces around Charlestown. This will make the current trails and walking paths more usable for those with reduced mobility, as well as make the spaces more comfortable for all to spend time. So we all know, we talk about the active transportation corridors and the evidence we've been following now. So, this can be used, you know, in our parks, in these trails and the active transportation corridors. So, and the fourth, your worship, is the upgrade and addition of community vegetable planters to incorporate self-watering design. So, revitalizing community spaces and improving accessibility for those with reduced mobility is a essential component of building a healthy, vibrant city. COVID-19 pandemic has highlighted the importance of outdoor spaces for physically distanced community gatherings, as well as the physical and mental health benefits that time outdoors nature brings. This project will act to provide access to comfortable, vibrant, outdoor green spaces all around Charlestown, reaching as many residents as possible. So, your worship, the estimated project budget for this proposal is the $250,000. The city will not be required to contribute funds to this total. So, your worship, there's a lot of good news there.
There is.
Staff in the Environment Sustainability and our Parks and Recreation staff are working together, put this proposal together and get it to the federal government.
And paid by someone else?
Are we?
Paid by someone else, the $250,000?
So, your worship, the, I want to give an update on the Simmons Sports Center. As council is aware, since the third paddock area was no longer an option, council has accepted Plan B, which is to replace Simmons Sports Center and pool at the Simmons location. Staff is currently working on an RFP for the schematic design services. The RFP is expected to be completed by the end of the week and will be posted for two weeks to receive bids. The Parks and Recreation Committee has already recommended the new facility have a walking track and the community space included in the new design, and we are open to continuing to receive valuable feedback from the public. I'm pleased to acknowledge that we have received some excellent feedback from a few different groups, and one in particular called Friends of Simmons. I think we all would have got a copy of that email. So it's sent to all of their vision for the Simmons Sports Center to pool replacement. It is feedback our committee is pleased to receive, your worship. And although the vision aligns well with the city vision on this project, I want to make it clear that the renderings that are posted on social media feeds are not renderings from the city of Charlestown. It's from the transit Simmons. So, we, we, we have committed to receive feedback from residents. So when our preliminary design is done, we do, and then have committed to going to a public meeting, receiving the feedback. We will do that. And, your worship, once we receive, once we go to the public meeting and we receive some further feedback, then we'll go to final design. So just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that those renderings, they're very professional, they did a very good job. They're very professional looking, and it does somewhat look like the city of Charlestown that put them out there. So ours, you know, we're still, we're still working our way through the RFP, we'll get the design done, then we'll have preliminary whatever meeting, and after that meeting, you know, take any advice that we get and we can incorporate it in the final design as well. And then we'll go from there. So, your worship, that's it for me. Unless there's any, any questions, I'll do my best to answer.
Show them some questions. I just take councillor Bernard, you want to go first, sir?
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, councillor Bernard, for your, for your report, just for the record. I knew Josh Curry was going to be an actual hockey player, coach of the hat in double A, so I knew we'd make it. Anyway, congratulations to Josh.
That's why I got a slow start, I guess.
It was uphill from there. Quick question on Simmons. So, I know we're replacing the, replacing Simmons with the, the funds that allow for 70 cent dollars roughly.
Seventy-three.
Yeah. So my question, I think I asked in the past, which I, which I don't know if we've ever gotten the answer to, but is it, is it, is it a trade-off of a pad for a pad or is it a facility for a facility? And when I say that, you know, is there an opportunity potentially to put a twin pad in this area using 70 cent dollars under the fund versus? And that's just, I'm curious if it's just a pad for a pad or is it a facility for 70?
According to the criteria for the 73% funding, it's to replace an older facility. So, no, if you're going to be, if you want to build two pads, you're only going to be funding for one for the one you replaced it.
That's so, so that's...
It's a pad for a pad.
Okay, so that's what it is. So, because, I mean, you can expand a facility by replacing the other facility with a much bigger facility at a 73, let's say, dollar, if that's not a possibility, it is for a one service.
Yeah. And that's why the report had to be done to show how we're dismantling the facility. And the whole idea of the funding is to get closer to net zero as you can. So you have an old rink, 73 rink, you know, it hasn't been great for greenhouse gas or emissions. So, this fund is for builds like this that you can get down to net zero. So they want to see what you're, what you're taking there. So, and, and just to go further, councillor Bernard, so the plan right now is to build a new pad beside the existing one.
And pool.
The existing one will stay open. When the new one is completed, is when the existing one will come down.
Yeah. That's rink and pool. Rink and pool.
Well, they're both, we said they were both going to be replaced, yeah. But the new rink, obviously you have to replace the pool, it's going to be right over where the pool is at.
Councillor Ramsey, then councillor McCabe.
Thank you, councillor Bernard. Just to look at him bit too, or a fun note there about Josh Curry, talking to somebody the other day that gets around with his brother, and he said the first game that Josh was called up with the Pittsburgh Penguins, he's sitting on the plane and he's trying to be nice and by himself, and he put his headphones on, and all of a sudden, this guy sits beside him, Sidney Crosby, he said, "Oh, you're from the Atlantic Canada? I want to know more about you." So, so that's cool, those for, I mean, for Crosby too, you know, to take that time that he heard that there's a kid here from, from the Atlantic Canada. So that's a fun note, really.
Yep, yep. Councillor McCabe.
Good, and I, I think I'm just thinking back, councillor Bernard, no, but Josh Curry did, yeah. Is the, when we're talking about this 70 cent dollars on the campus facility, so that's just for the ice pad, is what I'm understanding? So all the other extras that we saw, these beautiful renditions, that doesn't qualify for 70 cent dollars?
What, what do you mean there's extras?
Well, if, if we plan and have like the walking track and all of that cannot be part of that building?
We're hoping a little bit, yeah.
Okay. So does that have to be at one location or are we able to spread some of those buildings out as to be one?
Yeah, so my understanding is, councillor, that it's, we're replacing an older 73 facility that has all technology, that's what we're replacing.
Okay.
But we're also, we're also modernizing by, if you look down the next 20 years, I mean, right now, you want to have a walk track in it.
Okay.
So, at the end of the day, we have a budget, and we will try to stay within that budget. And right now, I think the council has agreed that we would look to in the design phase, we would definitely be looking at putting a walk track in and a community room.
Okay. So it does have to stay on that one footprint, is what I mean, I can't spread it, okay? Thank you.
Any other questions? Councillor DeRouan.
Thank you, thank you, councillor Bernard. So, if this is seven, 73 cents on the dollar or whatever, would we ever look at something like a Cody Banks rink, it's built the same amount of years? You know, if this was something that it was a $10 million rink and we only had to pay $3 million for it, wouldn't that be something that we could look at or? You know, I didn't know the figures until it was here tonight, so.
Yeah.
I know we, we have a projected, you know, five to seven years of longevity at Cody Banks, but at this cost, you know, with this program, you know, would we not be prudent to look at something like that?
Yeah, I guess, councillor, that would be, that would be a council decision. I don't think that's a possibility. I think in the planning, through John Hack, they were always intending on having Cody Banks as green, meaning they were going to twin a facility. Now, this, this event center that we've talked about, if that gets twin, then that will replace Cody Banks and each link center would become a community facility. That's always down the road, yeah. So, that's another discussion that we've had on Cody Banks. We know Cody Banks, we're told, and that's your probably better answer than that, I think, another seven to 10 years, I figure that'd be Cody Banks.
Based on the current structure, and that's not, you know, not the wood at the plant and everything, but there was some upgrades done to the plant recently within the last five years, so the building structure is, is really good, so it's been, don't phrase the building, so, you know, five, five to, five to seven, it could be lumber. So right now, our, we're needing to replace Simmons, and that's our sort of needs to be done.
Councillor Bernard.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, councillor Bernard, just a question for Frank, if I may.
Yes.
So, Frank, thank you. Is there, is there any infrastructure at Simmons currently that can be, once it's decommissioned, can be used at Cody Banks in order to, again, to help extend the life of that building?
Like what?
I'm just wondering if there's a, if there's something at Simmons that was replaced recently that may be newer than something that Cody Banks may have that we can, we can shift over to give it a move.
And I'm sure that, I'm sure that would be looked at, wouldn't we? We wouldn't be wanting, like, anything that was newly replaced in the last few years is still good.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, maybe that would add to...
Yeah, I would say yes.
So during our decommission report, if anything comes out of it that can be utilized elsewhere, we will be sure not giving it away or disclosing it.
Yeah. So the renderings for the, from the Friends of Simmons, I noticed it was the APM group that did those renderings. They looked at the, their renderings. Plus, we did receive a submission from the Charlestown Grill and Club too. All council, they've heard of possibility, so I'm sure they'll be looking at bringing up something at the public consultation.
Yeah, and there has to be discussion of that, we just received a report.
Any other, any other questions?
No.
Okay. That's your report, sir?
It is, your worship.
Okay. Thank you kindly. Thanks, Frank. Is there a resolution?
Frank?
No. And we have Water and Sewer, councillor DeRouan.
Thank you, your worship. The Water and Sewer Utility Committee met on Friday, or met on February the 10th, and the minutes are included in your package. I think that, that meeting was, was full of capital budget projects and approvals, so I don't know if anybody had any questions regarding that. I'm certainly trying to answer them as best I can, and all the minutes are in the package. Thank you.
Any questions for the Chair of Water and Wastewater? Seeing none, okay. Moving on. Economic Development, Tourism and Event Management. Public Works. Oh, Public Works, I'm going too quick there, I think I'm trying to follow, get, get to... I'm trying to get through this, it's good, okay. Go ahead there.
Thank you very much, your worship. Public Works, Urban Notification Committee did not meet this past month. As we all are aware, the staff have been pretty busy with, with trying to put numbers together for the capital budget. Winter operations are all along, it's brutal, I would say, just a shout to the staff there, working hard to keep our streets and sidewalks open and stuff. The Civic Board of Person with Disabilities have not met since last month meeting, and we are, we are meeting tomorrow, so we'll update that next month. And just, no resolutions in this bid. And I just want to give a shout out to one of our supervisors, Paul Lee, who had some health issues there, but he's back home and on the mend, I just want to mention that, he'll be speedy recovery. And I'll try to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, so we can go to Economic Development.
Thank you, your worship.
There he comes, there's, there's to do.
Hey.
Okay.
So the Economic Development, Tourism and Event Management Committee met on February 9th. The open draft minutes are in our package. The Arts Advisory Board did not meet. We don't have any real resolutions for consideration, but I will give a little update on what's been happening for this department. The Ice City Festival will wrap up next weekend. It's been well received and a great addition to our winter offerings. With the recent CPHO Circuit Breaker, a couple of the indoor events with larger capacities will now take place outside of the original and published festival base, including music and gathering. Islander Day activities were a tremendous success with all events reaching their max capacity. And you do see a lot of families outside celebrating and enjoying a lot of the activities these guys are putting on every weekend. Lots of positive feedback, faves, solid skating, it's been awesome. Staff have been working with GM Event Inc. on the development of a sport tourism action plan, which will serve as a guide for our sport tourism events through the end of the year as we navigate the post-COVID-19 recovery. Staff are also currently working with Sport PEI with respect to a bouncing back recovery webinar, which is upcoming this month. The Sport PEI Awards celebrating island athletes were held recently with our Sport Tourism Initiative Scores, the presenting partner. The mayor and the staff were in attendance, with the mayor presenting the award for sport event of the year to the 2020 U-Sports Women's National Hockey Championship. Staff continue to work on several fronts with the Canada Games Host Society with respect to the 2023 Games, most recently participating in a virtual consultation and cultural programming. Festival and Events Major Canada, or FAME, recently released the roadmap to recovery, opening the door to celebrate together again. The mayor circulated a copy to MP Casey as events have a profound impact on our city. Work is commenced on an event, Atlantic Event Strategy. The city of Charlestown is a founding partner of this organization and will be contributing significantly to the exercise. With the recent CPHO Circuit Breaker, the Charlestown Islander season was once again paused, however, I believe that the league play is about to commence again. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Thank you, councillor McCabe. Any questions? Great. No questions. I guess two, okay. Thank you, William. Environment Sustainability, and the council response was not here, so who's the deputy? Vice chair.
Mr. Bernard here? Not at all?
No, zoned out. Get ahead of him. Is he dead?
The Environment Sustainability Committee met on February 11th and the 23rd, draft minutes are included in the package. The mayor's task force of active transportation, the Charlestown Food Council, met on February 16th, the minutes are included in the package. Your worship, there's no resolutions tonight for consideration. Some updates, the monthly transit ridership for February 2021 was 29,153 compared to February 2020, when ridership was 58,210. We all know why that's down. Rink is currently maintaining about 49% of its normal ridership, monthly ridership from high school participants in the student transit. Later this week, the city will release a call for applications for both the Community Garden Program and the Community Planters Program. This is an effort to gauge interest from the community on the addition of new locations for the vegetable planters and community gardens. Priority areas of the city have been identified and will be the focus of any new food assets that are developed. Your worship, currently the city has community vegetable planters in six parks, and there is one community garden on city power plant. These assets are an important component of improving food security in Charlestown. The city, the city of Charlestown's proposal to the province's climate change fund successfully received $87,150 of funding towards the implementation of a program to help residents adapt to flooding risks and climate change. The Resilient Homes Parks and People Project will include a speaker series on home flood resilience and a number of demonstration projects on both residential and city property. So, your worship, that's all I have? Uh, no, there's more.
Hold on, hold on.
For the next several months, 19 Level 2 electric vehicle chargers will be installed For the next several months, 19 Level 2 electric vehicle chargers will be installed in Charlestown. That's good news. This project is a partnership between Maritime Electric and several PEI municipalities that recently received funding through NRCAN and RCIAN to install 50 chargers on PEI. These chargers help the city reach and double our target laid out in the city's Community Energy Plan for charger installation and are an important step in reducing community emissions. The city's sustainability and Public Works Department have worked closely, Worship, on this initiative. So, you know, it just goes to show, there's another couple of departments that are working together to make things happen, Worship, and so it's good to hear that. So, any questions? I'll do my best to answer.
Any questions? You do have a second reading there, Mr. Kelly.
Worship, to amend the city of Charlestown Tree Protection Bylaw to clarify when trees on the property line are city-owned trees and when the city conducts tree maintenance on private property. Therefore, it be resolved that the city of Charlestown Tree Protection Bylaw be read a second time and that the said bylaw be now approved and adopted, approved by Council Trill, second by Council Bernard, where Council Trill is not here, so I'll need another name, Sustainability. Counselor Barrett and Counselor Barrett, Worship.
Shall it pass?
Pass.
Okay.
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Worship. Thank you, Counselor Barrett, for your report. Just a question on the skunk and raccoon removal service. Recently, we've heard, I can't believe anyone hasn't brought it up, but one of the Public Works tenders there was a difference of $100,000, made a point of, it was from Volta. So in this particular case, I see the award of this, I'm just kind of, first of all, want to know, when to kill this from where?
Just one second. You've got to talk with that Mr. Kelly's in conflict.
I'm just stepping in the room as we go.
Counselor McLeod, it is going back to finance.
Oh, this is? Well, it doesn't say that here.
No.
It's going back to the buyer. Oh, it is?
It is. It was in finance, and it's going back to environment.
Okay, cool. I just have a question. Well, I guess the question is, is that there isn't a lot of difference between the local and the winning bid, so I'm just wondering, was there any consideration given to the local company instead? Because we're supposed to be promoting local when it's, you know, as much as we can, and in some cases you can't because it's too first grade, but in this case, it's not a whole lot of money, I just want it over a three-year period.
Yeah, and I guess we're supposed to be supporting local, I don't know, I mean, everybody wants to support local. So someone should have probably put in the tender, that way you could prefer local. But now we're asking, well, this company that you're referring to was with the city the last three years, you shouldn't ask questions then. So now, yes, nice to support local, but then you put the city, you might be in a live on situation, you're asking for bids, you have companies coming bid, and then we're starting to say, oh, well, you know what, after they're rated, after the recommendations made, then we have to, people say, oh, you know, I don't like them, we should do local. Put in the tender.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, I agree.
So I understand it, went to finance, you know, I just heard tonight it's going back to environment. I think the environment already made a decision. I don't know why it's going back to.
Going back for reconsideration, correct, Counselor?
Yeah, Worship, we probably shouldn't do this too much because it's going back to the, I had to counsel again for the non-ownage.
That's all right, no, that's, and I saw it in the package.
Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Deva, coffee.
Worship, we spend an awful lot of time on this particular issue, I mean.
On the local versus non-local?
Well, just on, like, we keep getting dragged into these tenders for, you know, it's, we should leave our staff to do their job, and we do what we can and hope we do a good job. Every second tender we put out, every third tender, somebody's coming across, coming along with some big and better idea. So it's getting a little monotonous, a little expensive, you know, it's staff, staff time, and time is money. But my own personal thinking on this, buy local. Like, my wife and I, we try to buy local. We spend, we're spending our money, it's our choice whether we're going to pay for a bag of oranges, we're going to pay $4 or $7, we'll go with local to support them. But we're spending other people's money here, it's not our money. People give us money, they call it tax money, give it to us, and we in turn buy goods and service for the city. And our job is to get the best goods and service for the best possible price. We don't have to do that when we're using our own money, but when we're using other folks' money, it's a different kettle of fish.
Could we just go to the deferral because it's been deferred back to the committee?
I just, I would just.
Did you want to re-
Not in depth at all.
About this?
Just, thank you very much, Worship.
Counselor McLeod, great ahead.
I agree with you 100%, but I think it's our job as councillors to make sure that staff are following process, that's all. They're spontaneal. It's just a question, right? And as long as the staff, you know, they come back, or the councillor comes back and says, you know, that's good, then that's good for me, I'm just asking the question.
It'll be back to environment sustainability, and they'll deal with it.
Thank you.
Okay, can we move on? Can we get the, Mr. Forbes, can you knock on the door there and tell Mr. Kelly he's not back in? Any other questions on that?
Thank you, Worship. Thank you, Worship. We met on Thursday, March 4th, the minutes are included in your package. The Forte Valhalla Gentry Advisory Committee did not meet since the last meeting of council. The youth engagement advisory committee did not meet since last meeting of council. There's no resolutions. Any questions? We will certainly entertain them.
Counselor Duffy, do you have a question?
Thank you, Worship. Thank you, Counselor Ramsey. Counselor Ramsey, as you know, and most people in this council know, and I'm sure they all know, the city's in the process of drawing up a strategic plan. And the reason that any organization has a strategic plan is to find out what's going on in their realm of activity. And through the plan, you find out what is needed within your community, within your organization, within your company, and where to put your money. Without a plan, your, every day is a new day, and you have different emphasis in different areas and that sort of thing. And the reason for the strategic plan is to make optimal use of our resources in the future. In order to draft this plan of action, we require information. Some of this valuable information is obtained from our residents. One way we obtain this information is from a resident survey. I'm led to believe that there seems to be some sort of movement to stymie or put on a shelf the resident survey, but I hope this doesn't come to fruition because without the resident survey, our strategic plan will be put on the shelf right next to it, and we'll never get it done, and we'll never have it done for this time of year. We've heard our fellow councillor, councillor McCabe here, almost pleading with us to get up and get going with the strategic plan because for every month we don't have it, we're losing money, we're just not having, putting our resources in the right place. So, and if we delay it too long, like I say, it's not going to be, it's not going to be done in this term of office. So without the, without the survey, it's certainly not going to be done. So I'm asking Counselor Ramsey here as the Chair of Strategic Planning, if you could, if it's required, is a resolution of council to ensure that the resident survey continues on its path? Because without it, without the resident survey, there's no strategic plan. Without the strategic plan, our money's just going out hand over fist, and we all know as an exercise at dinnertime today and earlier tonight, we don't have money to throw around. So I support Counselor McCabe in her efforts to get a strategic plan underway. Thank you, Worship.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Duffy. Yes, this was brought to our meeting last week, I believe, or Thursday, and I was surprised, but we put it out, what we do, we put it out to our members, and they were not in favor of it at this time. And I thought it was a great idea, and we're getting feedback, and this is not something that's going to happen tomorrow, next week, or something like that, with the residents' feedback. This is for two years, four years, six years down the road, so we have a plan. Whether we're all here in two years' time or four years' time, I don't know, but this is a plan. So we want their input with it, and I'm surprised, to be honest, that it didn't go through, but then I got to speak for the, to a private group, and they voted with 3-0, so this is why it was put on hold as a plan. Because I thought it was supposed to start this week, in my cramps. Mr. Kelly, I think we're all set to roll it out this week.
You say your group, you're talking with your committee?
Yes, I am. Yes, I am. So this is what it is, and they voted not to put it out at this time. Everybody has their own personal reasons, we didn't get into that, but I thought we're going to roll it out this week, in fact, starting today, and it didn't happen, so this is why it was off the table. I hope that answers some of your concerns, but I think it's a great idea, my own personal opinion, and I'm not worried of what people are thinking about us as councillors, because it's a learning tool that you learn from. We're all talking about learning tools, that we're supposed to grasp on here, and this is what it is. And as I keep emphasizing, this is not, that's going to take effect this six months or something along that, we just want people's opinion in the whole thing. That's all that's, yeah. Thank you.
Counselor McCabe first, you know?
Thank you, and thank you, Counselor Duffy, for supporting this, because, yes, I have been asking for this as we're entering almost into our two-and-a-half-year part of our term as council. Because what a strategic plan does is it provides us with a roadmap, kind of a vision of where we would like to see our city be in years to come. It provides us with accountability, with transparency, and we're forever evaluating, changing it, modifying it. I look at our Environment Department here at the city, they have had a strategic plan for their department. And this year, we saw that a lot of the things they had in their plan has been checked off, so now they're heading back to add to their strategic plan and develop it more. We need to do that as a city. We need to be accountable. We need to hear what residents, what's important to residents. I'm not sure why anyone wouldn't want to get more feedback and more evaluation on everything and how we can do better. We can always do better. We are here to represent the people, it's important that we hear this. This is an important piece, and I personally would like to move that we get this on the floor to proceed with the community survey, or whatever it is that you're, whatever calling it, to not put a stall on the strategic plan, but to at least start this process so we can get one for two years. Thank you.
Counselor, you're up.
Thank you. Maybe I'm missing a few sheets. I don't have any of that information, you may.
It was a closed session, wasn't it?
It was a closed session.
It's a closed session.
Why would that be closed?
Ask the Chair. There's the Chair. Chair, why was putting closed?
I was told we were going to close, Worship. Mr. Kelly, am I right around that?
It was the draft proposal at the time, Worship, for discussion, so it was there for information to move for, Worship. But it was not the final project at the time until the end.
Just one second. Just Counselor Barrett, go ahead. Go ahead, Counselor Barrett, go ahead. You're up, you're up, because Counselor McLeod got passed. Go ahead.
So Counselor Ramsey, could you just answer for me? I'm just trying to figure out why your committee, you say it's 3-0, but it didn't matter, you said, what can be written yourself, like, it's something that we have talked about in here, it sounds like it'd be a good plan to, I was just wondering.
Just, guys, just in a point of order, because it was a closed session, we'd have to win the closed session, discuss it. I don't know why, it was put into a closed session, correct?
Correct. Because it was only draft of the questions that were going to be in the survey, and I'm not saying too much, and we all reviewed it, and our, like, four, five people reviewed it.
What we're to do is-
And then we went from there.
We complete this CAC report, and then win the closed session at the after.
Sure.
Correct? Is that all we?
To provide direction, you don't need to be open to provide direction.
It's a closed session.
The council can give direction any time.
So we'll win the closed session at the end of this week.
Sure.
Okay. Anything else for Counselor Ramsey's report? Counselor McLeod, did you have a question?
No, not on this number, thank you.
You're all right? Okay. Okay, can we go to the Council Advisory Committee report?
Worship.
Yes.
The Council Advisory Committee met on February 26th, and the open draft minutes are included in the package. We have two resolutions for your consideration this evening, and if you have any additional questions, I'll do my best to answer.
Counselor McLeod? You have a question, Counselor McLeod? I'm just, Counselor McLeod, I'm just trying to get clarification number one. So I thought we voted one of the councillors to fill that position. Are we rescinding number one, like I'm-
We're rescinding, we had.
Yes, you had.
You're right, the councillor's name was used, I see, but it's the committee chair.
So you're going back to the committee chair?
That's what we discussed in CAC.
It's a second resolution, though.
Yeah, this resolution here is rescinding, okay, got your paper on the table, and then there's the other one. Do you want to read it there, Mr. Kelly?
Worship, move by Counsel Jankoff, second by Counsel Duffy, that the appointment of the Chair of Strategic Priorities and Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee in the attached resolution dated January 13th, 2020, be rescinded.
So we have to go on that? They have to vote on that? Two separate ones?
Yes.
Want to vote on the first one first?
Yeah. We want to rescind the one of January 13th.
To rescind that it's the Chairs of Strategic is the appointment, rather than the other one that they want to put on.
Okay.
That's what's-
So you have the second one there as well.
First one first, right? Questions? Have to vote on this one first, Worship? Okay, so the first one we're voting on is the Chair of Strategic Priorities, be rescinded. Be rescinded. Got it? Is that right?
And one that is being rescinded is that-
No, this is being rescinded.
That one's from Deanna, and this is the one that's.
So this is being, that's being rescinded.
We have to draw upon both of those stuff.
Yes.
So this one's being rescinded, Worship, and then there's one to come forward.
Okay, so do I have the one to be rescinded is that the appointment of the Chair of Strategic Priorities in Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee in the attached resolution dated January 13th, 2020? That should be 2021?
Correct. It is.
Counselor advisory number two.
Be rescinded.
It's one and two.
Yeah. Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hands. It's him. Okay, now you want to read the next one, sir?
Worship, move by Counsel Jankoff, second by Counsel Duffy, whereas the city of Charlestown is an active member of the Canadian Capital Cities Organization, the CCCO, and whereas the city holds two voting seats on the Board of Directors with one member being a tourism officer, and whereas the CCCO failed policies in the Economic Development Tourism Event Management Committee in terms of reference, therefore it be resolved that the council appoint the Chair of Economic Development Tourism and Events Management as the city's second representative on the Canadian Cities, sorry, Canadian Capital Cities Organization Board of Directors.
Counselor, if you have a question?
The elected official that was first appointed, I'm assuming that they don't want to go there, and they were talking before we changed it to Chair of Economic Development, you know? I think there was an appointment, there was one.
Back in January, yeah, I was appointed to it.
Okay.
But because I was no longer Chair of that strategic plan.
They've nobody appointed after you?
No.
Okay. So what you're doing is just clarifying that the Chair of Economic Development will be the one who represents inside the CCC.
Worship, if I may, I'd like to speak with us for a second.
Yes.
And if you want to blame anybody, you can blame me, but when I was Chair of Economic Development, all that, that was under us, and we were going pretty good, and Alana thought she would like to do that role with us, so we as a council approved, I shouldn't say, Counselor Jankoff, sorry, but we approved her at that time to go and take that role. And then when she got off, when the whole committees were changed, well, then she went there, and then she just kept that role, I guess is what I'm trying to say. And we agreed with that, but now, it was, before it was stated that I should have had that role, but I didn't want not have that role. So I put her up to our committee, which I found out was not right, was the wrong way to go down that road, that I should have went back to the CAC. And then once I checked with the terms of reference and everything, it works with the Economic Development Tourism Officer, so that's where it should be sitting. And that's why I kept saying, why is it under our committee? Because it's standard in terms of reference, if they worked that, and it pushed came to Because it's standard rate in Terms of Reference that they worked at, and if push came to shove, Counselor Jankoff should still be sitting on it because it's a three-year term, and she's only been in for about an hour and a half. So if there's ever was a gray area there, where they can just say, you can keep it, but at the same time, they don't want people to do that.